We thank you for the years of service of Mayor Tom Rouse. May his example of leadership continue to shine. Confident of your goodness and love, we gather and we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'll call the December 2nd, 2014 Meeting of Earl Langer City Council to order. Ask that we remain standing while we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be proud to have you stand next to me. Roll call, Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore.
Present.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. You should have copies of the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 4th, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time for special presentations. I'll turn the floor over to Mark Fields.
The mayor's gonna make his way down here. While he does that, this is the very first employee recognition night that we have had. It's a very special moment for all of us here to recognize outstanding performance throughout this year. I want to tell you a little bit about this. We adopted this back the first of the year, and to give you an idea, I'm gonna read to you exactly what the Merit Award is. The Merit Award is a way of recognizing employees within the city of Earl Langer for outstanding personal performance. It is awarded annually and presented to the employees within each department that best exemplifies the city's commitment to excellence and service. The award consists of recognition in a public forum, that's why we're here tonight, and a predetermined monetary sum awarded with written acknowledgment for outstanding service. The Outstanding Service Award is given to those employees meeting the standard merit qualifications, which are: they have to be currently employed with the city of Earl Langer. The employee must have been employed full-time or part-time with the city for at least 75% of the designated yearly evaluation period. The employee cannot have had any disciplinary actions within the year in which he is nominated. The employee must receive a score of exceeds expectations or greater in all five categories of the department's standardized yearly evaluation. And the employee must be recognized by the department head and nominated to the committee. Now on top of that, there's another award, the Exemplary Performance Award. In order to qualify for that, you have to meet all of the Outstanding Service Awards, plus, it's for an employee that is given, or is given to an employee that has best demonstrated a commitment to excellence by an exceptional act, a deed, or a continued course of action above and beyond meeting the standard merit award qualifications. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very happy tonight that we are going to be able to present these for the very first time, and these employees are very deserving of this. We're gonna go with the administration first. I was tricking on how to do this, I thought alphabetical would be the best way. Keep me out of trouble. Would Sherri Hoffman please come up and join Ms. Anderson, Mayor Rouse? This is a nomination from Ms. Andrews, from Ms. Hoffman. I would like to recommend Sherri Hoffman for the Exemplary Performance Award. Sherri took on the responsibilities of city clerk during my absence. She demonstrated that she has the skills to handle the duties and lead the department. Sherri has learned to trust her knowledge and judgment to make decisions on her own. Sherri has excellent organization skills and is a very detailed-oriented person. Sherri multitask effectively and is able to handle a high volume of workload. A particular value to the department is Sherri's team player mindset, enthusiastically embracing change, ability to work with minimal supervision, and an unwavering commitment to exceeding expectations. Sherri has an outstanding level of service professionalism and follow-through. Sherri has volunteered for most of the city events in the past several years. Sherri is participating again in the Lunch Buddy program, the reading program at Miles Elementary, which shows not only her dedication but her willingness to embrace new programs. Sherri is a hard-working, top-performing, and professional, and I believe is deserving of the Exemplary Performance Award, submitted by Ms. Andrews. Sherri, I congratulate you on receiving this award. Bobby Joe Klaasner, please join Ms. Andrews. Nomination by Ms. Andrews. I would like to recommend Bobby Joe Klaasner for the Outstanding Service Award. Bobby Joe is always upbeat and willing to help others. During my absence, Bobby Joe showed exceptional teamwork by assuming some of my duties with little or no instruction. During the absence of a receptionist, Bobby Joe assisting in processing passport applications on days other than assigned to her, Bobby Joe assisting in training the new receptionist. Bobby Joe received a report, received a report that I-9 audits were being conducted throughout Kentucky and took the initiative to be proactive and conducted her own internal I-9 audit. Bobby Joe understands and acts on the principle that team players help each other succeed. She works well with members of her own department as well as members of other departments. The Administration Department employees have worked hard to improve the morale in their department, and Bobby Joe has been an integral part of this success. She demonstrates daily her commitment to the city's mission statement. Bobby Joe has been successful in keeping employees informed on benefits. This was a goal set during her March 2014 evaluation, HR usage deadlines, the benefits fair, the new personal time off program, and the vacation hour changes, all were led by Bobby Joe this year. For those reasons, she was recommended for the Outstanding Service Award, and I congratulate you on getting this award. Again, the nomination from Ms. Andrews. I would like to recommend Jennifer Magerly as a candidate for the Outstanding Service Award. I have been consistently repressed by both Jennifer's attitude towards her work and her performance on the job. Jennifer has shown a continuous commitment to meeting the goals of our department while employing her talents and an exceptional execution of her job duties. Jennifer is extremely organized, can work independently, and is able to effectively multitask to ensure that all projects are completed in a timely manner. She also has the analytical skills to diagnose problems and devise viable solutions. Jennifer is a staff expert on our property tax program. She administers all aspects of the collection of property tax from preparing the database, having the bills sent out, collecting the taxes, preparing to leave with notices, and everything that goes along with that. She has sacrificed her personal time and has worked after hours without complaint, all the while meeting deadline after deadline with excellent results. She has shown a level of dedication above and beyond the scope of her job. It is rare that you find an employee that exhibits such motivation, dedication, trustworthiness, talent, and self-discipline as Jennifer does. Jennifer is the kind of employee we all hope to get when we decide to hire someone, and I recommend her for the Outstanding Service Award without reservation. Jennifer, congratulations on receiving this award. Lieutenant Rhonda Wolf, join Chief Whittaker. The nomination from Chief Whittaker reads: EMS Emergency Medical Service is the foundation of our organization. It contains the majority of our responses while being the main focus of those we serve. The responsibility of improving care to our citizens during an emergency medical situation is the responsibility of all members. However, the way in...
...to grow. We thank you for the years of service of Mayor Tom Rouse. May his example of leadership continue to shine. Confident of your goodness and love, we gather and we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'll call the December 2nd, 2014 Meeting of Earl Langer City Council to order. Ask that we remain standing while we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be proud to have you stand next to me. Roll call, Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore.
Present.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. You should have copies of the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 4th, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time for special presentations. I'll turn the floor over to Mark Fields.
The mayor's gonna make his way down here. While he does that, this is the very first employee recognition night that we have had. It's a very special moment for all of us here to recognize outstanding performance throughout this year. I want to tell you a little bit about this. We adopted this back the first of the year, and to give you an idea, I'm gonna read to you exactly what the Merit Award is. The Merit Award is a way of recognizing employees within the city of Earl Langer for outstanding personal performance. It is awarded annually and presented to the employees within each department that best exemplifies the city's commitment to excellence and service. The award consists of recognition in a public forum, that's why we're here tonight, and a predetermined monetary sum awarded with written acknowledgment for outstanding service. The Outstanding Service Award is given to those employees meeting the standard merit qualifications, which are: they have to be currently employed with the city of Earl Langer. The employee must have been employed full-time or part-time with the city for at least 75% of the designated yearly evaluation period. The employee cannot have had any disciplinary actions within the year in which he is nominated. The employee must receive a score of exceeds expectations or greater in all five categories of the department's standardized yearly evaluation. And the employee must be recognized by the department head and nominated to the committee. Now on top of that, there's another award, the Exemplary Performance Award. In order to qualify for that, you have to meet all of the Outstanding Service Awards, plus, it's for an employee that is given, or is given to an employee that has best demonstrated a commitment to excellence by an exceptional act, a deed, or a continued course of action above and beyond meeting the standard merit award qualifications. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very happy tonight that we are going to be able to present these for the very first time, and these employees are very deserving of this. We're gonna go with the administration first. I was tricking on how to do this, I thought alphabetical would be the best way. Keep me out of trouble. Would Sherri Hoffman please come up and join Ms. Anderson, Mayor Rouse? This is a nomination from Ms. Andrews, from Ms. Hoffman. I would like to recommend Sherri Hoffman for the Exemplary Performance Award. Sherri took on the responsibilities of city clerk during my absence. She demonstrated that she has the skills to handle the duties and lead the department. Sherri has learned to trust her knowledge and judgment to make decisions on her own. Sherri has excellent organization skills and is a very detailed-oriented person. Sherri multitask effectively and is able to handle a high volume of workload. A particular value to the department is Sherri's team player mindset, enthusiastically embracing change, ability to work with minimal supervision, and an unwavering commitment to exceeding expectations. Sherri has an outstanding level of service professionalism and follow-through. Sherri has volunteered for most of the city events in the past several years. Sherri is participating again in the Lunch Buddy program, the reading program at Miles Elementary, which shows not only her dedication but her willingness to embrace new programs. Sherri is a hard-working, top-performing, and professional, and I believe is deserving of the Exemplary Performance Award, submitted by Ms. Andrews. Sherri, I congratulate you on receiving this award. Bobby Joe Klaasner, please join Ms. Andrews. Nomination by Ms. Andrews. I would like to recommend Bobby Joe Klaasner for the Outstanding Service Award. Bobby Joe is always upbeat and willing to help others. During my absence, Bobby Joe showed exceptional teamwork by assuming some of my duties with little or no instruction. During the absence of a receptionist, Bobby Joe assisting in processing passport applications on days other than assigned to her, Bobby Joe assisting in training the new receptionist. Bobby Joe received a report, received a report that I-9 audits were being conducted throughout Kentucky and took the initiative to be proactive and conducted her own internal I-9 audit. Bobby Joe understands and acts on the principle that team players help each other succeed. She works well with members of her own department as well as members of other departments. The Administration Department employees have worked hard to improve the morale in their department, and Bobby Joe has been an integral part of this success. She demonstrates daily her commitment to the city's mission statement. Bobby Joe has been successful in keeping employees informed on benefits. This was a goal set during her March 2014 evaluation, HR usage deadlines, the benefits fair, the new personal time off program, and the vacation hour changes, all were led by Bobby Joe this year. For those reasons, she was recommended for the Outstanding Service Award, and I congratulate you on getting this award. Again, the nomination from Ms. Andrews. I would like to recommend Jennifer Magerly as a candidate for the Outstanding Service Award. I have been consistently repressed by both Jennifer's attitude towards her work and her performance on the job. Jennifer has shown a continuous commitment to meeting the goals of our department while employing her talents and an exceptional execution of her job duties. Jennifer is extremely organized, can work independently, and is able to effectively multitask to ensure that all projects are completed in a timely manner. She also has the analytical skills to diagnose problems and devise viable solutions. Jennifer is a staff expert on our property tax program. She administers all aspects of the collection of property tax from preparing the database, having the bills sent out, collecting the taxes, preparing to leave with notices, and everything that goes along with that. She has sacrificed her personal time and has worked after hours without complaint, all the while meeting deadline after deadline with excellent results. She has shown a level of dedication above and beyond the scope of her job. It is rare that you find an employee that exhibits such motivation, dedication, trustworthiness, talent, and self-discipline as Jennifer does. Jennifer is the kind of employee we all hope to get when we decide to hire someone, and I recommend her for the Outstanding Service Award without reservation. Jennifer, congratulations on receiving this award. Lieutenant Rhonda Wolf, join Chief Whittaker. The nomination from Chief Whittaker reads: EMS Emergency Medical Service is the foundation of our organization. It contains the majority of our responses while being the main focus of those we serve. The responsibility of improving care to our citizens during an emergency medical situation is the responsibility of all members. However, the way in which we undertake this responsibility stems from the commitment of the EMS coordinator, Lieutenant Rhonda Wolf. Rhonda is dedicated to her role as EMS coordinator and spends countless hours working to ensure we constantly improve. She constantly works late into the evenings on her designated shift to see that the EMS operations run smoothly. She is a member of both Kenton County and regional EMS committees, and quite often comes to work on her days off to handle situations that arise. She has been instrumental in updating our current EMS protocols to match those of Kenton County. She completes run reviews, handles attorney requests for documentation, attends outside trainings, all the while providing outstanding care to the citizens we serve. Rhonda is instrumental in the preparation for the state EMS inspections, certifications of our members, and completes all tasks with the desire to do the right thing. Her empathy is displayed to all of those we serve, and that is something not been taught. In fact, I just received an email from a council member who witnessed Rhonda at her best. Our ambulance crew had just returned from a run during a city luncheon, when, while setting down to eat, received another run. Having already eaten, Rhonda and another member took the run for the recently arrived crew in order for they could eat. This is just a very small example of the dedication and overall sacrifice Rhonda displays on a daily basis. As fire chief, it is a true blessing to have the commitment, the work ethic, and the positive behavior in which Rhonda displays to all associated with her. Rhonda, I congratulate you on winning of the Exemplary Performance Award. The nomination from Chief Whittaker. Dave has been a supportive and true integral part of the change process this organization is undergoing. He has been the right-hand man in assisting and supporting the position of fire chief and has provided unbiased opinions in all things discussed concerning our department. He has used his past experiences with the department to help formulate new ideas and methods of operation, assisting greatly in forming the overall update direction of the department. He has completely handled all assignments without question and delivered outstanding results. Dave has used his intelligence, his willingness to create change, his inner drive to succeed, and his strong desire to ensure the implementation of new ideas to become an invaluable member of this organization. His commitment to this department, its employees, and the future vision of the organization is to be commended and appreciated. Dave, I congratulate you on this award.
You're welcome, sir.
Sergeant Todd Brendel, would you join Assistant Chief Wilson and Mayor Rouse, please? This is a nomination from Chief Bob Arons and from Lieutenant Douglas Eglar. Please consider Sergeant Todd Brendel for this year's Exemplary Performance Award. Below are listed several but not all inclusive points for consideration. Sergeant Brendel has done an outstanding job this year preparing new sergeants Raider and Wally for their promotions. Both came from his shift prior to being promoted and made the transition easily due to his training and direction. Sergeant Brendel's shift consistently operates as a team with very few personnel issues or managerial miscues. Sergeant Brendel's shift has interrupted several crimes in progress this past year. His shift's self-initiated activity is the highest on the department, and his shift consistently takes early calls. Sergeant Brendel has several new employees and only two veteran officers that, in my opinion, perform above expectation. Police clerks report that Sergeant Brendel's daily paperwork is consistently turned in correctly and on time. His progress reports, video reviews, and cruiser inspections have been completed prior to the due date this entire year. As a District One sergeant, our busiest district, he keeps up to date with case management and consistently works to close cases. For the first time in over 15 years, Sergeant Brendel was assigned a third shift in July and made the change without complaint. He is not called in sick and has taken the initiative to help organize his fellow sergeant's vacations request for the upcoming years so that overtime can be held to a minimum. Sergeant Brendel is operating very independently, so much so that he requires very little direction from his superior officers. He is quick to keep his supervisors informed on critical incidents and other issues as needed. Overall, Sergeant Brendel goes above and beyond to take care of his people, foster the department's vision, and set the example of leadership in sergeant ranks. Sergeant Brendel, I congratulate you on the Exemplary Performance Award. Lieutenant Douglas Eglar, would you please join Assistant Chief Wilson? Just let everybody know, Chief Arons would have been here tonight, but he's got the flu, I believe. Another nomination from Chief Arons. Please consider Lieutenant Douglas Eglar. Please consider Lieutenant Douglas Eglar for the Exemplary Performance Award for his outstanding personal performance. Listed below are several points for consideration that stand out. He changed his schedule to cover overtime shift, including weekends and nights created by sergeant's absence and vacations and schools. This saved several thousand dollars in overtime budget, along with keeping harmony among the other sergeants by not moving their shifts. Having lieutenants that are committed and dedicated patrol is refreshing. He started the collateral duties list. With the retirement of several lieutenants and sergeants, it became imperative to create such a list to make the transition smoother, and it has worked and is still improving. Lieutenant Eglar was assigned command of the operations of the dispatch center with manager Dave Leonard, reporting directly to him. He took the lead in implementing the crime analysis program by sending three dispatchers for training to become crime analyst. The program has already proven beneficial to both patrol and criminal investigations and their day-to-day duties. Lieutenant Eglar is involved in many outside programs provided by the city and the police department. Lieutenant Eglar also did an outstanding job with the field training program this past year, having eight new recruits in the program. At times, there were two to four recruits in the program at the same time. He managed the workload flawlessly. Lieutenant Eglar, I congratulate you on the Exemplary Performance Award. Canine Officer Chad Girdler. This nomination was submitted by Chief Arons, Lieutenant Eglar, and Lieutenant Sean Sims. Please consider Chad Girdler for this year's Exemplary Performance Award. Listed below are several but not all inclusive points for consideration that stand out. Officer Girdler has done an outstanding job with his new assignment in the new canine, ASCO. He has increased, he has an increased responsibility with an important assignment and developed ASCO for dual certification. We believe that this is the best canine the department has had. Officer Girdler has worked very hard, both on and off-duty, training ASCO without complaint. Officer Girdler consistently makes time to attend extra-duty canine demonstrations and city functions. He has also upgraded the department's capabilities and response time with the canine program. Officer Girdler is tasked with helping manage the department's response to specific traffic and parking complaints. He manages the logistics of the radar trailer, the stealth radar, and data processing. The process has been directly improved with his attention to detail and follow-through. As a trained fatal collision investigator, Officer Girdler has involved in three fatal collision investigations this past year. He has completed the extra work and attention to those high-profile cases quickly and accurately, and is now assigned as the department's primary reconstructionist. He was the primary investigator on two fatalities this year, and as he has gained the experience, notable improvements in investigation process have been observed. As a former field training officer, Officer Girdler has been a resource for new officers, specifically in the areas of canine capabilities, procedures, search, and seizure, as well as constitutional issues. He is quick to answer a question for other officers, and his demeanor in the field is reliable. He operates in his day-to-day duties independently. Outside working hours, Officer Girdler routinely attends city functions with his family. He continually serves, or he currently serves as the Secretary of FOP Lodge 55 and works on projects such as Cops and Kids and is a liaison for fellow officers. Officer Girdler's performance over the past year is in keeping with the mission of the city and the goals associated with this award. Officer Girdler, I congratulate you on the Exemplary Performance Award. Telecommunicator Dispatcher TAC Officer Shirley Peck. This award was submitted by Chief Arons and Dispatch Manager Leonard. I would like to nominate Shirley Peck for the Outstanding Service Award. Shirley is currently handling three separate duties within the department: Terminal Agency Coordinator, Crime Analyst, and Senior Dispatcher on her shift. As TAC Officer, Shirley has excellently maintained our NCIC records, which is the National Crime Information Computer for everybody, record-keeping and compliance. She led us through our last audit with the Criminal Justice Information System staffs, where we received a 0.0% error rate, which only a handful of other agencies received this distinction. As Crime Analyst, Shirley has created a template for disseminating information to officers in the field through the use of Google Docs. This template has already been used in several incidents in the field and has proved invaluable. Shirley is also tasked to assist the detectives and has received several commendations from them on her research and information-compelling skills. As a Senior Dispatcher, Shirley consistently performs her duties as both a dispatcher and overseeing her shift. Shirley moved to night shift in 2014 and did so with no complaint. Shirley is a communications training officer, and although she has not utilized this in an official capacity in 2014, I feel she is responsible for the continued growth of her shift teammate, Telecommunicator Chambers, whose performance has greatly improved since he was teamed with her. Shirley is a true asset to the department, and for the reasons listed above, I feel she is deserving of the Outstanding Service Award. Shirley, I congratulate you on receiving this award. Officer Joseph Scroggins. Nomination was received from Chief Arons and Lieutenant Sean Sims. Please consider Officer Joseph Scroggins for the Outstanding Service Award. During the past year, Officer Scroggins has repeatedly demonstrated an exceptional dedication to duty. He has demonstrated his commitment to excellence on several levels during this past year. Dedication. Officer Scroggins always reports for duty early and routinely stays late without hesitation. He has made a point to attend nearly every city function in some capacity, usually on his bicycle, providing security. He has volunteered to work overtime details and covered shifts when needed. On more than a few occasions, he changed his schedule to accommodate the shift needs without overtime pay or complaint. It must be noted that some of these changes have come at the last minute, requiring him to reset his personal plans. Leadership. Officer Scroggins has volunteered and has become active in multiple endeavors within the police department. He is very active in the Bike Patrol program, not only total miles ridden, but he provides the mechanical maintenance for the bikes in the program. He became certified in this endeavor by staying over and working extra hours during Bike Patrol School. He has recently become a member of the Special Response Team and has been well-received by the team leaders. His fellow officers and supervisors see him as a very capable and competent officer with natural leadership skills. He has expressed interest in becoming active in the Fatal Collision Reconstruction Team. Performance. Officer Scroggins' daily performance is kept at a high level, being very self-sufficient, needing no outside motivation to obtain his assigned goals. His activity is well above accepted minimums in each measured category. He demonstrates the ability to make good decisions based on sound job knowledge. His reports are complete and submitted on time with few errors. His day-in-and-day-out performance is exceptional. This nomination is not based on one major event or action. It is based on his exceptional dedicated performance, his enthusiasm, and his dependability. Officer Scroggins is the type of employee the city of Earlanger created this award to recognize. Officer Scroggins, I congratulate you on the Outstanding Service Award. Lieutenant Sean Sims, would you please join Assistant Chief Wilson? This nomination was received by, or from, Chief Arons. Please consider Lieutenant Sean Sims for the Outstanding Service Award for his outstanding personal performance. Listed are several points for consideration. Changing his schedule to cover overtime shift, including weekends and nights created by sergeant's absence, vacations, and schools. This saved several thousand dollars in overtime budget, along with keeping harmony amongst the sergeants by not moving their shifts. Having lieutenants that are committed and dedicated to the patrol ranks is refreshing. Participated in the implementation of the collateral duties list. With the retirement of several lieutenants and sergeants, it became imperative to create such a list to make transitions smoother, and it has worked and is still improving. Lieutenant Sims is in charge of scheduling for the department and spends his off-time adjusting the schedule to allow the core program to thrive. His dedication to the wellness program is bar none. He teaches the Bystowe Program to all police officers. He is the only officer out of twenty-two that took the initiative to prepare for and retake the Police Officers Professional Standards Test, and he passed it the second time. It's a physical fitness test. Lieutenant Sims is involved in many outside programs provided by the city and police department and is taking the lead role in working with the community liaison on events. Lieutenant Sims, I congratulate you on the Outstanding Service Award. Director Bogart. Brian Ralston, would you join Director Bogart, please? This nomination is by Director Bogart. On behalf of the Public Works Leadership Team, it is with great pride and excitement that I have the honor of nominating Public Works Team Member Brian Ralston for the Exemplary Performance Award for 2014. Brian has been a member of the Earlanger family since May 24th of 2010. As a Navy veteran, he brought a background of welding and fabrication skills to the table that we knew would have a positive impact on the needs within the department and the city. Little did we know at the time how much of an impact Brian would have on our team and the valuable role that he would take on in the city. Since day one, he consistently brings a can-do attitude to work. He greets coworkers with an infectious positive attitude and gives 110% every day, or every day, with every work task he is assigned. He is grateful for the opportunities Earlanger has provided him and his family, and his work constantly reflects that. Brian's role on the Public Works Team continues to develop with each year of service. He is at a level of maintenance technician after achieving his Category III and VI pesticide certifications. And in addition to the normal operational functions, he serves as an assistant team lead on one of our snow removal teams. During the 2014 evaluation period, Brian continued to consistently go above and beyond expectations during the winter season as he would come into work for implement weather events ahead of scheduled time, when his team was on call to ensure that he would be here on time and would automatically complete preparatory work for his fellow team members. In addition, with his welding and fabrication skills, he continued to make countless contributions to the team that saved the city thousands of dollars because of the work he was able to complete in-house. This work included replays on snow plows and snow removal equipment, fabrication of storage carts for pickup truck salt spreaders, and off-season repair of mower trailers. Thank you for taking the time to review the nominations, and I look forward to Brian receiving the recognition he is worthy of. Brian, I congratulate you on receiving the Exemplary Performance Award. Al Newman. And this nomination was received by, from, Director Bogart. On behalf of the Public Works Leadership Team, it is with great pride and excitement that I have the honor of nominating Public Works Team Member Al Newman for the Outstanding Service Award for 2014. Al Newman has been a valued member of the Public Works Team and Earlanger family since November 4th of 2002. He initially started out as a seasonal maintenance worker prior to being hired as a full-time maintenance worker, and now serves as a crew leader. Since the beginning of Al's career with the city, he has always exhibited an attention to detail that is second to none, constantly going above and beyond work quality expectations. In addition, he is a consummate team player and always brings forth a positive attitude towards everyone he comes in contact with. As the department saw changes in personnel during 2013 and 2014, Al played a key role in getting new team members acclimated to the department's operations. With his positive demeanor and consistent pleasant attitude, he has served as a mentor to many of our new team members and is the key reason for some of the successes we have seen them experience. Al is part of the foundation of positive change that started many years ago in this department. He has ensured that this positive change will continue for years to come as he worked with great diligence to ensure this has been passed along to all of our new team members. Thank you for taking the time to review the nomination, and I look forward to Al receiving the recognition for his commitment to the city. I congratulate you on the outstanding performance. We can go right into the Service Awards? All right. Been forty minutes? Ladies and gentlemen. We change things up a little bit. Very well-deserved. I congratulate every one of you again. You might not want to give me too many of those. Be here a while. Mike Bianchi, would you please join the mayor? This is a pleasure for me, and I'm sure that I've stood up here and done this before with you, probably for your twenty-year pen. Now twenty-five. Yeah. Had the pleasure to work with Mike for over twenty-three years inside the police department. It was a pleasure every moment. And Mike served on the police department from 1988 to 2013, where he retired as a lieutenant. He was very instrumental during that time in several different things, one of them being what we talked about a little bit tonight, the Fatal Reconstruction Team, and also our accreditation program, our accredited police department. Rest solely on Mike's shoulders in the reaccreditation that he went through at least twice during my tenure there, led us through that. After he retired in 2013, he was appointed to the Board of Adjustments in 2014. Still current, that gets him his twenty-five years. Mike does many things, and I'm looking at him, and if he'd show you his fingers, he actually runs the Zamboni machine for the hockey team that plays over in Cincinnati and almost cut his fingers off one night with that machine somehow, if I remember correctly. Still serves there, and I believe he's back there today, and you're the head of security at U.S. Bank Arena? Yes. And he still loves hockey. One thing that Mike gives back to the community, to one of the many things that Mike gives back to the community, he heads up the clown ministry at the Earlanger Christian Church. And if y'all have never seen that, it's an amazing thing. It really, truly is. It is. Yeah. 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 Absolutely. And the group of kids that he gets to do that. Michael, thank you for your twenty-five years of service. Mr. Brown, would you come down and join us for a second?
Sir.
Tonight, we're going to say, not goodbye, just so long for a little while, from several people here that have been on this council and have served this city quite admirably over the years. Don't want to say goodbye, we want to see you around. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Brown for a long time. Started a program inside the police department called the Volunteers in Police Services. Mr. Brown was one of our first members to that and still can serve, serves today. Mr. Brown was one of our first members to that and still can serve serves today. Every event, doesn't matter, just a couple weeks ago, we're out collecting canned goods in front of Kroger's to give to the needy for Thanksgiving. Who was there? Mr. Brown. Can't thank you enough for the things that you've done for that program and hopefully will do in the future. He's been a member of the city council for two terms, being first elected in two thousand and eleven, served eleven and twelve, and in thirteen and fourteen. He's served on the administration committee and the public works committee. He's been Erlanger's representative to the Kentucky League of Cities. I don't know of any functions that you don't go to, you haven't been to. And haunted train conductor every Halloween that we do at the railroad park, and then the one that we did on the east side of town, you made that whole haunted trail. We thank you for those kind of things. Mr. Brown's wife Diane is our representative to the Kenton County Planning Commission. And where are they sitting back there? Connor, are you back there? There he is. Hey. That young man's at everything. Mr. Brown makes sure he's there. He's going to be a fine future citizen, well, citizen, adult citizen sometime with our, we hope he serves us well too. Mr. Brown, thank you for the service that you've given us. Thank you.
I saw him coming, I think.
Was a hint? You brought me the extra one. Mr. Longshore has had served three terms on Erlanger City Council. I believe maybe his father-in-law, Mr. Berger, who's sitting here tonight, maybe had something to do with that, him being a council member and getting you involved in city government. It's very lucky for the city that that occurred. Thank you very much. During his time on city council, he served on the finance committee, public works committee, and the administration committee. Participates in St. Henry School activities, where his children, Sidney and Jack, attend, and he participates in all the sporting events the children are involved in. I will say one thing, and I want, I don't want you to be remembered for this, but it is one meeting that I will never forget. You know what I'm going to say. It had, it had a rooster involved in it. It was under the administration committee, I believe, and it was going to see if in fact we wanted to, you know, change our ordinance to allow the rooster to remain in the city of Erlanger. And I don't know that we made national news that night, but we, we got pretty close to making national news that night. And actually, you had people in the audience dressed in chicken suits, rooster suits. It was funny, I still have pictures of those to this day. It was. Resided over that meeting and several other, other meetings that, and kept control of them and did a very good job. Mr. Longshore, thank you very much for your service. All right, there's a couple here, Mayor Rouse, that we want to give you. First of all, I believe there is a service pin. And going back, says here that you was on the codes enforcement board from eighty-three to eighty-eight, on city council from eighty-nine to two thousand and two, and then mayor from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen. During that time, you served the Kenton County Mayor's Group as a vice chair, the Kentucky League of Cities Municipal Government League Representative, our planning and development services for formerly NKAPC representative, and Northern Kentucky Area Development District Representative. In your leisure time, you used to officiate high school sports, served as an assistant varsity coach for Lloyd Memorial High School's football team. You're a member of the Lloyd Memorial High School Hall of Fame, and you were the recipient of the distinguished award for the Northern Kentucky Athletic Director Association in two thousand and five, and you're an elder at Erlanger Christian Church. You continue to practice law in Kentucky and Ohio. You're past president of the Kentucky Bar Association. You were recipient of the Northern Kentucky Distinguished Lawyer in two thousand and four, and you received the Richard Lawrence Lifetime Achievement Award in two thousand and twelve. And you're co-founder and past president of the Northern Kentucky Bar Association. I don't know what else I can say. However, I am going to do this. We're going to go right along, and we have your gavel and a plaque up here for you. Looking back on some things, and this was kind of ironic, Sherry is a pack rat sometimes and keeps everything in paper form. I have your first mayor's message from January second of two thousand and seven. That's why we got Sherry keeping all the paper. So I'm going to get a drink before I start reading this. Ladies and gentlemen, it's five pages long, I won't read it all, I promise. I promise. I am quite honored to be sitting in this position in this chamber tonight. You should know some things about me. To be a leader, one must be worthy of being followed, and I hope that I meet that qualification. I hope that the way I conduct myself in this office brings pride and honor to you and the city. It has. I have committed to four years of new service to Erlanger and will do the best I possibly can. I was raised a child of this municipal government. I remember the glare in my dad's eyes when we moved into the brand-new city building right here. More room than they would ever need. We've heard that before. I remember the neat community room in the basement that eventually turned into the police department, and later the flooded police department. And I remember playing in the little jail cell in the basement. I went to UV to be a civil engineer, just like Jim in Vioxx. Received my degree, passed the EIT exam, and spent my summers working at Vioxx and Vioxx learning the practical side of engineering. But during my final year there, roommate was in law school, and I read some of his textbooks. I was hooked. The UK College of Law admitted me, and I have been practicing law for twenty-eight years in two thousand and seven. Government is a part and parcel of law practice. In nineteen eighty-nine, I was privileged to get an appointment to council and serve with wonderful folks like Russ McClure, Fred Thomas, Matt McChesney, Charlie Dickout, Ken Yaden, Frank Rose, Bill Shire, Mark Otto, and even Paul Hahn. And Paul's not here tonight, but the picture's back there. Yes, he is. Yes, he is. Many others served on this council with honor and integrity. I took a break in two thousand and two, but now I'm back. Now I am honored to become mayor. I take this place on the podium fully cosin of what come before me. I sincerely hope that we can do some things in the next four years that we can all remember as fondly as I remember my association with the city up to this point. City council is the eyes and ears of Erlanger. Look for ways to improve our city, listen to the needs, wants, and desires of our citizens, discover problems before they fester so we can address them and become proactive. We are not just caretakers of what has gone before, we are thinkers, developers, servants, managers, stewards, activists, protesters, and most of all, good people who were sent here to do a job. So with this in mind, fasten your seatbelts, adjust your mirrors, and hang on, because here we go. It has been a wonderful, wonderful journey. Thank you very much.
Are we having a council meeting tonight?
We are having a council meeting, I promise. 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 Yeah, the Rocket Docket. We've been there in court with them before. We got, we got looking at this, and the staff got together and was thinking about a true honor, not only for Tom Rouse, but for the Rouse family and what it's given to the city. Lucy, are you back there? Would you please come up? Is there anybody else here from the Rouse family tonight? Jessica, please come up and the kids. And I'm sure we're going to miss something here that the family has done over the years, and we apologize beforehand if we do. Okay, going back, and if you see this, and the honor that we're proposing to bestow upon the Rouse family is dedicating a room. We have several rooms around the city building that are dedicated to individuals and, but not one in, not to a family. And what you all have done for the city of Erlanger and continue to do for the city of Erlanger needed to be recognized. So what we're going to do is we're going to have the Rouse Room, dedicated to the Rouse family.
I'm never going in there.
We're going to start with Clyde Rouse, your father's. He taught English and history at Lloyd High School, and during one summer, he filled in for the city coordinator, Mayo Taylor? Mayo Taylor? While Mr. Taylor was on summer leave. Obviously, he did such a good job, Mr. Taylor didn't come back. He chose not to return to the city after his summer leave, and the city offered Mr. Rouse a permanent position as city coordinator. Mr. Rouse replaced Mr. Tyler as the city coordinator in nineteen fifty-eight, making Mr. Rouse the city's second city coordinator. During Mr. Rouse's tenure as city coordinator, the following was achieved. Erlanger went from a small town to being the second most populated city in Kenton County. Erlanger was the first city in Kentucky to have a complete records retention and disposal schedule. The city adopted a comprehensive plan in nineteen seventy-one. They established a housing authority to provide adequate and sanitary living quarters for individuals and families. Mr. Rouse served for twenty-three years as city coordinator and retired in nineteen eighty-one. After he retired, he served on the Erlanger Elsmere School Board, or Board of Education, and remained active with the Erlanger Lions Club. Marjorie. Marjorie was the wife of Clyde and the mother of those two standing up there tonight. Lifelong resident of Erlanger. She was a graduate and a recipient of the Lloyd Medal from Lloyd High School, and she was inducted to the Lloyd High School Alumni Hall of Fame. She taught at Lloyd High School and Dixie High School and was later a professor of literature and language at NKU, where she was honored as an outstanding teacher by the NKU alumni before retiring. And she was very active in the Erlanger Christian Church. Thomas Rouse, the son of Clyde and Marjorie. A graduate of Lloyd High School, member of Lloyd High School Alumni Hall of Fame. Worked for the Public Works Department one summer after high school graduation and before heading off to college. That was the one we didn't talk about earlier. Cotton grass. Became a civil engineer but fell in love with law and went back to school to become an attorney. Mr. Rouse served on the code enforcement board from eighty-three to eighty-eight, city council for seven terms. Mayor Rouse became the ninth mayor of the city of Erlanger, serving two terms. Mayor Rouse served as the city's representative on the following, the mayor's group, the municipal league, planning and development, Northern Kentucky Area Development. He's past volunteer coach of Lloyd High School Football, Erlanger Lions, formerly officiated high school and college in youth baseball, basketball, and football games. Mayor Rouse was the recipient of the Distinguished Service Award by the Northern Kentucky Athletic Directors Association in two thousand and five, serves as an elder of Erlanger Christian Church, the past president of the Kentucky Bar Association. Mayor Rouse received, I was the recipient of the Northern Kentucky Distinguished Attorney Award in two thousand and four, and received the Richard Lawrence Lifetime Achievement Award in two thousand and twelve. Co-founder and past president of Northern Kentucky Bar Association, and this is the one that I'm sure that nobody knows that the Rouse family did. Donated a number of acres to the city of Erlanger, land around this place. We still have what is down on Lower Erlanger Road, the old farmland that someday, it's awful hilly, but maybe a park that your family graciously donated to the city. And of course, you're a lifetime member of the Erlanger Lions Club. Lucy. Lucy's also a graduate of Lloyd High School, member of Lloyd High School Alumni Hall of Fame, and she taught elementary school in the Erlanger Elsmere School District before becoming the assistant principal and later principal at Tishner Middle School. The hardest job in the school system, the middle school. She has served the city of Erlanger in the following capacities. Worked part-time in administration seventy-two, seventy-three. Volunteered on the Erlanger Rescue Squad from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety-two. That's where I had the privilege to meet you, serving as the assistant chief and the chief of that organization. And you volunteered on the fire department's auxiliary from eighty-two to two thousand and, or from eighty to two thousand and two. Works at the police department as a clerk and a dispatcher, where you're still today part-time. And you served on the Board of Adjustments from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and nine during your time away from us in the police department. And you're a lifetime member of the Erlanger Christian Church. We hope this is a, an honor fitting what you all have done for the city and what you have given to the city, and on behalf of the city, I thank you very, very, very much for all of your work and dedication. Thank you. Go back to work, yeah. I will say while the mayor's making his way back up to the top, the two awards that you see in front of the two plaques that you see, those people that receive those awards tonight, those employees, will be added to those, and they will be displayed out here in this hallway, and hopefully for year after year for everybody to recognize of the dedication and service that you've given our city. Thank you very much.
Okay, it's time in our agenda, after all of that, for the mayor's report. And I have a few things to say. This is my ninety-sixth and final regular city council meeting. I became mayor of this fine city on January first, two thousand and seven, and my current term comes to an end at midnight, December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. In between these dates, I've been honored to serve our residents as best I could, making decisions, setting direction, and assisting with policy questions. There has been a whole lot of work, but also a whole lot of fun. My thirteen years as a council member, my term as mayor, and the dozens of years I volunteered as a football coach, speaker, site-based council member, hiring committee member, and a dad of two students at Lloyd have thoroughly enriched my life. The best part of serving as your mayor is getting to work with such outstanding people, and you all saw our team here tonight. I am so proud of all of these people. I'm really proud of the team we assembled, from the newest employee to our chief administrator, Mark Fields. In my opinion, the city is running as smoothly as it ever has, and our team is indeed performing collectively to provide exemplary services for our community with integrity and pride. I'm also proud of the four city councils elected since I became mayor, the eyes and ears of the city. Councils made up with independent thinking, dedicated, hard-working servants who always get it right. The council decision to dedicate additional revenues from the payroll tax to capital needs was, in my move, brilliant. The council decision to support the administration's position to maintain our separate and award-winning communication center was particularly brave in the face of pressure from our county judge executive. Both decisions have turned out to be in the best interests of the city. These are but two of the many decisions council is... These are but two of the many decisions council has regularly called upon to make, and our council has possessed the collective wisdom, fortitude, and integrity enabling wise decisions. I thank each and every one of you for your service and extend my best wishes to those who have previously served. I will soon be joining your ranks. The hardest part of being the CEO of this government is the role the mayor plays in employee relations. Trying to decide who to hire among a pool of highly qualified applicants is a critical part of this position. We get it right more often than not. Sometimes we miss the mark. So even harder is deciding if an employee is not the correct fit for city operations, imposing discipline, reducing someone in rank, and, on rare occasions, terminating an employee from city employment. This latter duty has caused me heartache, loss of sleep, second-guessing, hard feelings, and loss of friendships in the eight years, and I will not miss this part of the job. But that's the job I had, and I did it. I leave this organization knowing that while in charge, I did everything in my power to improve and empower the city and her people, and uphold the honor and tradition that Erlanger residents hold. We faced many challenges, including the struggling economy, and we prevailed with the opening of new businesses and the continuing of dependable, viable city services. I believe that when Mayor Mark Otto completed his terms as mayor, Erlanger was in better shape than it was when he took over. And I think I will leave this organization in better shape than it was when I became mayor. Given the economic conditions we have experienced, that's really saying something, and your crack city team will continue to stay the course. Our business community is thriving and growing. The view from I-75 is proof of this, and when some of the announcements that I will believe, believe, I hope they'd come last month, but I believe come shortly, are made, there would be no doubt in anyone's eyes that Erlanger is on the cusp of an explosion in business activity, and when things finally break loose, it's gonna be fun to watch. The residents demanded and deserved action to clean up abandoned properties and address properties in disrepair, to protect public safety and to protect property values. We acted, and the homeowners in Erlanger will be better off because of this action. Our team should take pride in many of the completed projects, including the Garvey-McAlpin realignment, the purchase and demolition of the concrete plant, which I believe is directly leading to the impending development of the showcase site, cleaning up a section of the Dixie Highway, sidewalks from one end of Erlanger to the other, and more to come, keeping and increasing the school resource officer program in our schools, including our three-city partnership with Dixie Heights High School, who by the way, is playing for a state football championship, and the first time in its school history. Congratulations to the Dixie Colonels. So many more things, too many successes to mention tonight. I'm sad that together we could not complete all of the tasks currently on the table. Rebuilding the central firehouse, converting the existing firehouse into a community center, seeing the Commonwealth Station project to its completion, and continuing the beautification of entrances to our town. There's much more to do, many more mountains to climb. You are up to the task, and I'm confident that all will be well. The foundation is too sturdy to fail. To borrow a phrase from my friend and Erlanger resident William T. Robinson III, onward and upward. My view of the position that I've held for eight years is that it is in the best position in our city from which I could most effectively serve our neighbors. The office of mayor belongs to the voters, not to me, not to anyone else. This year, the voters made a decision to make a change to top. I respect their decision, and I wish my successor well. As for me, I have other things to do. Moving onward and upward. Most of you know that I'm a person of many and varied interests. Maybe I'll become more involved in teaching law at Chase. Maybe I'll expand my career focus on professional responsibilities and become ethics counsel for new clients and law firms. Maybe I'll be a better poppy for Brimley Joe, Camden, and Sweet Caroline, and for Gunner Thomas, expected to arrive this spring. Maybe I'll get around to writing the books that have been brewing in my head for a while. Maybe I'll go see a movie. Maybe I'll become a recluse in a cabin in the Blue Ridge Mountains. I could become Cav Man. I could become Mr. Red on a scooter. The world is my oyster. I spent 21 of the past 25 years in elected office in Erlanger. It's time to move on. I appreciate those informed and dedicated people who have supported me in so many ways in the time that I spent serving this city, and I hope we remain friends as we move forward. I'm looking forward to this new chapter in my life, but I know that it could not be written without the experiences of the past. And so I'll close with this, from the King James Version. "To everything there is a season, and a time to every purpose under heaven. A time to be born, a time to die; a time to plant, and a time to pluck up that which is planted. A time to kill, and a time to heal; a time to break down, and a time to build up; a time to weep, and a time to laugh; a time to mourn, and a time to dance; a time to cast away stones, and a time to gather stones together; a time to embrace, and a time to refrain from embracing; a time to get, and a time to lose; a time to keep, a time to cast away; a time to rend, and a time to sow; a time to keep silent, and a time to speak; a time to love, and a time to hate; a time of war, and a time of peace." It's time for me to go from this place and see what other adventures await. God bless you, and God bless the city of Erlanger. Now for the rocket docket. Reports of standing committees, Public Safety Police, Ms. Sutkamp, Ms. Pitts. Are you okay? You think, I didn't think I'd get through that either. Thank you. Chief Wilson, anything else to add? Thank you. Any questions of the Public Safety Police Committee? Public Safety Fire and EMS, Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
We've got a couple of real quick things. The committee meeting, report from the November 18th regarding the exhaust system bid, we're gonna postpone that till the 16th of December, and we're also gonna postpone the ambulance bid report. We're gonna postpone it until the 16th also. And I wanted to highlight a couple of things on the fire prevention month. And it's gonna be amazing when I finish telling you what all the police, what all, I'm sorry, what all the fire department did for the month, and how many children they reached. There was a firehouse tour for Megan Townsend. Fire safety was taught to TLC Daycare, Bright Future Daycare, Grace Edgitt Daycare, Rainbow Childcare, Grace Academy, Imagine Tomorrow Daycare, Miles Elementary, and Northern Kentucky Montessori. They reached 4,641 students in that month. And they also did a fire drill for the United States Postal Service on Dixie, and they did trunks of treats for the Erlanger Baptist Church on Commonwealth, and they did a fire drill for Dolwitt Business Center. So I think they did pretty much everything they could do during that whole month. JD, do you have anything?
I don't have any chiefs in the house.
Chief Whitaker. Any questions of Chief Whitaker or the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
Sure, actually, I'm just gonna mention one thing, and this is my favorite thing. I'm really excited about this. Puddle line is officially open. We have expanded to two lines this year, so Mr. Bogart is gonna be extremely busy. That is 859-727-3893 and 727-7998. So if you have any potholes going around the city of Erlanger, please give Mr. Bogart a call. He'll be answering both lines. Is that why he's pointing ahead?
Just have a couple of things real quick to mention. First of all, the final leaf collection will happen the week of 12/8 through 12/12. Each zone in the city will be collected one final time. Let's see here, also, the Christmas tree drop-off will be December 29th through January 9th at the Keith Henry Public Works Facility, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And already this year, we have had two inclement weather call-outs using 75 man-hours, 602 miles, and 82 tons of road salt.
Eighty-two, huh?
Eighty-two in just November alone. And Mr. Bogart is in the gallery.
When I started mayor, I think salt was $28 a ton. It's now, what, $82 a ton? Something like that? And I wonder why it costs more to run the city. Any questions of Mr. Bogart or any questions of the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to administration. Mr. Burke, Mr. Longshore.
Administration department will be closed Thursday and Friday, December 25th and 26th, and also Thursday, January 1st. And garbage will not be collected on Christmas Day or New Year's Day. And Missy is in the house.
Anything else to report, Ms. Andrews? Any questions of the committee or Ms. Andrews? None, moving on to finance. Mr. Hyer, Mr. Blanketship.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The audits are nearly finished with their draft copy of the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2014. The document will be distributed to each one of the members of council as soon as it's completed and should be ready for a formal presentation at our January Finance Committee meeting. Staff will be starting preliminary work on the preparation for the fiscal year 2016 budget during the next few weeks. It never start, it's never too late to get started. You were also sent a copy of the October 31st, 2014 financial statements on November 19th. If you have any questions, Greg Eggelman is still in the house. Greg?
Randy, you have anything?
Nothing to add, thanks.
Mr. Eggelman. Thank you for the work that you've given me since you, since I've been the mayor, on the finances of the city, and the award-winning service you provide, and everything you do for us. Thank you very much. Friendship City Networking, Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
The month of November saw the return of the senior Thanksgiving luncheon. Instead of one day, because we have so many people that want to do that, there was two dates, November the 18th and November the 20th. And the city of Erlanger, in conjunction with the Erlanger branch of the Kenton County Library, hosted these two luncheons. While this year was bitterly cold weather, hampered the attendance at both sittings. All who did attend enjoyed turkey and dressing meal prepared by Colonial Cottage. And additionally, the director of the library hosted a quiz that consisted of local trivia questions.
And I have the events coming up. Everything's going on this weekend. Friday, December 5th, at the Erlanger Depot. The city of Erlanger is hosting its first-ever tree lighting ceremony. The event kicks off at 6:00 p.m. with carolers, hot chocolate, other treats, and most importantly, a visit from the big man himself, Santa. So that's 6 to 8 this Friday at the depot. And then on Sunday, we have the Holiday Extravaganza, and that's at the Erlanger Branch Library, and that's from 1 to 4. So bring your family along, come to the library for the annual Holiday Extravaganza, featuring carriage rides, a visit from Santa, and crafts. Bring your own camera and prepare to get in the spirit. So those are two good things to look forward to. And I think Kathy has one more thing to add.
Actually, two. At the tree lighting ceremony, there's gonna be two trees, and we're gonna dedicate those, one to Tim Beadham and one to Diane Miners. So anybody who comes, I think that's a great idea. And these wonderful awards that you see here in front of you, they didn't just happen, okay? Missy, our city clerk, asked Sherri to look in, investigate what we could do to show everyone, the councilmen that are leaving, and all the employees who got their awards, and the mayor. And Sherri spent hours upon hours getting quotes, looking into ideas, coming up with different things, and I think that we ought to thank Sherri and Missy for letting this wonderful award thing happen with coming up with all the different things that everybody received. I just wanna give her a thank you. And Becky's in the house.
Becky. Any questions of the committee or Ms. Hopkins? Yes.
I don't know. Would it be okay if you mentioned what's gonna happen at the church on the 6th? All the nativity fest?
Oh, well, I was gonna do that in new business.
On what?
New business.
Oh.
At the end of the document.
Sorry, I should've known better.
That's all right. I've seen them. It's an amazing, amazing thing. Okay, reports of special committees. Do we have a report from cleanup, Tommy?
Yes.
And Corinne?
Cleanup committee meets once a month and has been very busy this year, so we wanted to give you all a year-end report of the things that's been done. The two parts, codes enforcement and rental properties. I'm gonna do the rents properties. 820 properties were identified in the city of Erlanger as possible rentals. Total rental properties that have passed inspections are 509. The total number of properties awaiting inspection is 15. The number of properties that did not pass initial inspection was 80. All 80 of these properties were fixed without citation. The number of properties that have not submitted an application is 116. We're gonna wait till January to issue any citations for any violations. Total number of properties tagged rentals, or tagged rentals is 16. Total number of properties tagged rentals that are actually vacant is 16. Another 18 of these rental properties were actually inhabited by, inhabited by, inhabited by owners or family members. And then Tom has the codes part.
I just wanna make one comment, too. The number of properties that did not pass the initial inspection, I don't know if you heard that, but all 80 of those passed the secondary inspection. So this is doing what we want for the city of Erlanger. It's cleaning up the properties that we've identified as ISOs that are problem areas in the city, so I think it's really working well for what we're doing. And I'm very impressed with the team, what they've been doing in the codes enforcement. But I do wanna give you a year-end wrap-up for the codes enforcement. To date, during the calendar year 2014, the code division has made 2,239 documented visits. When you look at the breakdown of this, we actually gave out 389 citations. This is after we visited that residence twice that we gave those citations. The total dollar amount for those citations this year was $63,750. And due to remediation, because we're out there meeting with these folks on a daily basis and working with them, we were able to get 220 of those voided by the homeowner. So I think that's very impressive. That total dollar amount came, took off about $25,000 for that. And we did have 129 citations that became final, and out of that, the dollar amount collected was $41,011.44. I think that's very impressive to go out and say, hey, these are the things that we're doing to make sure that the properties are in good shape, that the citizens have, you know, they, people are looking at the things that they have and they're necessary in keeping things up to speed. Also, with these liens and also this dollar amount, we have to thank our, you know, city of attorney and his team that have worked hard on these, too, to make sure that these remediations are done. This money is either taken away or it's actually collected to make sure that we are paying for this program as it moves forward. And I think with the city our size, it's very impressive for what we're doing. We do have two things that came out of this, and this is an ask that we've had, and these are one of the things that we think would be important moving forward. One of those is to revitalize Erlanger Housing Corporation. This was something that was started many years ago. And Mr. Dunhoff, I believe you were on that committee. And what we looked at that is start to address the foreclosures in the city and the properties that are abandoned, and what can the city do to help with these areas. Now, we already have Public Works cutting the grass, we have our codes enforcement going out there and making sure the safety issues are taken care of, and we're hitting up the banks and those folks as hard as we can. But one of the things that we could possibly do with this revitalization is help by utilizing funding that we could get through this program to help purchase these properties, or actually help citizens purchase these properties, too. So there's some, there's a vast array of things that we could do with this, and I'm very excited, and I think we should consider revitalizing that. Second thing is, and I believe I've heard this many times on this side down here, and you know, Councilman Howard, is a cleanup day in Erlanger. How can we do this? You know, we've talked about it, we've said it, we've mentioned it many, many times. We do it really well. The county does some things. They have these, you know, bringing your old tire day, burying your battery days. We could work with Public Works, work with codes enforcement, maybe have a little bit of that citizen pride. You know, name one of these days, get it out there, get it out there in the papers, get it out there in the works that we're doing, and actually take the step, the next step to get that moving forward. So those are two of the asks that we have, Mayor, and hopefully, maybe you could send it to some committees for us for the last time.
You got it. I think that the cleanup day is, especially if you do it in conjunction, perhaps, with the county, because they're taking the big nasty stuff.
Yes.
You know, and we can make it a county-wide project, but at least we can, it's a great idea. One day, everybody goes and cleans up. Good job, committee. Yes, ma'am.
Tom and I both received a lot of positive feedback about people are starting to notice. And I, we also wanted to thank Frank and Kim because they put a lot of work into this, and they really helped us out a lot. We just want them to know and appreciate all they've done.
You know, like I said, the folks in the town wanted us to do this, and we did it. And thank you, Frank, for everything. Any questions? Any questions of this committee? How about, do we have a report, Patty, from the garden, Friendship Garden?
Actually, I do. I wanted to thank Public Works. One of the problems that I had noticed was that people coming down Commonwealth couldn't even see it.
Didn't know it was there, yeah.
Yeah, nobody knew it was there. They knew it was a green spot, but anyway, Public Works came in and took out some trees and some bushes, and now it's lit up at night. And when you come into the city, it's a beautiful sight.
You can see it.
And I thank them very much for doing that.
Good job, guys.
As always.
As always. Is that all, Patty?
Yes.
You all have heard the reports of standing and special committees. They'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion of Mr. Cahill, second by Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any reports from representative groups this evening? Yes, Mr. Dunhoff.
I know that Mark and I and Dave Hahn have talked, Mr. Vioxx, about getting this started again and talking about it, because there's a couple items on the agenda that we may have an opportunity to purchase, so.
The housing corporation. The housing corporation.
Yes.
Yes, great.
So we have talked about it and we're moving on with it. Great, okay.
Great. Any other reports? We'll move on to reports of city operations. Our engineer, Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, I'm going to make a report tonight.
Well, since your hokies beat my Cavaliers in a horrible game Friday, I suppose I'll permit it.
I'm going to, this is going to be real out of the ordinary. Comments relative to a newspaper article that occurred a couple of weeks ago about the condition of streets, and actually, the Earlanger streets came into the article relative to new streets not lasting as long as they should before they had required maintenance. And it has some bearing on some bids we're going to receive here in a few minutes, and we already received them, my recommendation on those. Mrs. Brown is here from the Planning Commission, and she knows that I was drafted by the Planning Commission at the suggestion of the judge executive and with the agreement of the mayor's group because of the issue relative to street standards and the condition of streets in northern Kentucky. I was drafted along with Ted Vogelpohl, another professional engineer who happens to be a geotechnical engineer. And the two of us were drafted, and I was asked by the chairman of the Planning Commission to put together a committee to study their street standards and make recommendations back to them. No, we have not been dragging our feet. It's been almost two years, but the issue has been that we've discovered a number of issues that need to be resolved, and we're very close. In fact, hopefully, we've had our last meeting, and hopefully, the Planning Commission can act on this either in this month or in January to adopt new regulations. But some of the things we discovered were that streets that were being built weren't being inspected properly. Materials weren't being tested to the extent they needed to be tested, and the ones that are failing the most in recent construction have been the asphalt streets. Well, asphalt streets happen to be flexible. They're not rigid pavements, therefore, they're more dependent on the subsurface, the soils underneath. And there was very little information in the regulations requiring a study of the soils to support those. With asphalt, the materials themselves weren't being tested, and there's a requirement, the state requirement, of how much recycled shingles and how much recycled, by tune, this material can be mixed back into asphalt. So some of those things were not being checked, along with the amount of liquid asphalt. Concrete, which has not been our biggest problem recently with new streets. However, we did discover that during the early years, and unfortunately, they have impact what we're going to receive tonight, in the early years, in the 70s, and Earlanger built a lot of public streets then because we had a bunch of cow trails in Earlanger with, that weren't paved, and city got aggressive and decided to build new streets where streets didn't exist. And those were being done by assessment to the property owners, so the property owners were paying directly for them. But unfortunately, they were being built in the 70s when we had the energy crisis, and the concrete suppliers were using fly ash, which is a cheap product coming from the, the production of steel, and mixing it in to the concrete and reducing an amount of actual cement that was in it. We recognized it some, a few years later because of the durability of the concrete wasn't there. Also, we discovered in our study that the aggregate being used in concrete for many, many, many years has been expansive aggregate. It's taken out of the, out of a wet environment, out of the river, brushed, it's dried out, and when it's put back in the concrete and becomes wet again, it expands and causes cracking from the underside and expands through the surface. Therefore, we weren't getting the life out of the pavements that we expected, and they weren't being maintained. And I will tell you that in Earlanger, because I just explained to you, we had to build our streets by assessment, we didn't have any money. We had very little money for maintenance, and it was always assumed that when you built a new streets, the money for maintenance was put on the older streets, so you didn't really have to deal anything with new streets. And unfortunately, we declined to them at, at the time they were needing attention. We'd do a better job today. The streets that we're going to take bids on or recommend this evening happened to be bid streets that were built on an assessment basis in the 70s, and they were built at the time when Mr. Nordlo lived back on Lafayette, when Sunset was only a 16-foot wide street and didn't have any curbs and gutters on it, very narrow. And the, terminated not too far past Lafayette before the lines club, and the streets on in the, in Florence existed, but they started carrying heavier traffic than was ever anticipated. We added curbs and gutters on that, and we'd had to widen the street and put a sidewalk in because there was going to be a new school. Same thing happened on Earlanger Road. Earlanger Road got paved and with sidewalks because there was a new school back there. Riggs Avenue was done because of the new school. Well, lo and behold, those streets all of a sudden became corridors for bus traffic. And over the last 45 years, the use of those pavements is significantly different than what anybody anticipated 45 years ago. So with all that said, I just wanted to make sure that if anybody says anything about the committee, we, I can take responsibility for drafting the rest of the members on that committee. And I made a point of getting the engineer from the representative mayor's group, an engineer that represented the Land Development Council, an engineer that, Mr. Thiel, Mr. Vogelpohl from Thielam was a geotechnologist, myself, and Mr. Fisher, who was in the article, happens to be an engineer, and he was one of the biggest developers in the area. So it was a five-person committee, and we do have some recommendations, and Mrs. Brown knows his, she's been kicking me every once in a while when she sees me, wanting to know when it's going to come. But we are, we are done. So with that said, I just wanted to point out that what's going to happen, and we're going to find out that these streets that we built in the 70s, large streets, expensive streets, and they were expensive at that time, are a lot more expensive now, and the one we're going to, one of the streets we're going to receive bids on tonight and recommend is, is large enough that exceeds our normal project size of $250,000. Therefore, it was subjected to the prevailing wage scale, so we're going to get about 15% less for a dollar by doing that. And we can expect that to happen on a lot more streets in Earlanger, like Earlanger Road, Riggs Avenue, Riggs Avenue, and other streets like that. You might ask me, why can't we break it up and do it in pieces to keep it under the 250? Can't do it because it's obviously an effort to circumvent the use of the prevailing wage scale. So we want to make sure we're clear and we don't subject the city to a major fine to the state of Kentucky. So with that said, I think I've explained my position with the committee that I served on and where we might be with the future streets in Earlanger. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Vioxx? You know, one of the problems we know, we recognize in talking to the engineers and the mayor's group, and more so in some of the newer cities. Crestview Hills was having this problem. A developer would develop an area, put in a concrete street. As soon as it gets turned over to the city, the city becomes responsible for maintaining this concrete street, and the standards were such that the street was, as opposed to having, let's say, a 20-year life, was actually living five years. And all of a sudden, the taxpayers of the city were on the hook for fixing the streets. And it's that theory, and it's that process upon which Jim and his committee have been working, so that the streets that are being rebuilt or built now, we don't have that problem again. And that's, that's going to be good for future generations. And Jim, thanks for your work on that. It's, and all of the engineers and Mr. Fisher for doing that. Okay, city attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you all for the compliments of my daughter, really, on the codes enforcement board. She does most of that work for our office and spends a lot of time on it, so I will convey that. Congratulations to her. There is on your agenda tonight an ordinance for a text amendment for the zoning ordinance. I'm going to ask that you pass that until the next meeting. The ordinance itself is simple, but if you read it, you'll notice that there's a number of attachments to it. Those attachments are very difficult to do. They require email of the text of the zoning ordinance from the Planning Commission in a format in which I can adjust it. Due to the holidays, I wasn't able to get that until Monday. I have prepared the attachment, but the attachment I have now conforms with a state statute that requires amendments to sections of ordinances to set forth in full the section that's being amended. Some sections of our zoning ordinance are 50 pages long, 60 pages long. I've got the amendment prepared, but if I use the one I've got, it'll probably cost us over $1,000 in publication costs alone. So I need to whittle that down. I'll tell you, I'm probably bending the language of the statute a little bit to do that, but all of these changes are merely language changes. They, they're not substantive changes. Things like changing the name of the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission to the
PDS.
Planning and Development Services of Kenton County. You know, it's just, it's not, my point is, it's not substantive. None of it is. And, you know, I just need to have a little bit more time to reduce the size of those amendments. So if you would.
We'll hold off on number three tonight.
Next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions of Mr. Wickman? Cao, Mr. Fields.
Now, just to follow up on what Mr. Wickman said, I was at a meeting last week at Planning Development Services, and there is absolutely no time that we have to get this one done that he's talking about. We have plenty of time to do it. As a matter of fact, Mr. Gordon said he probably would be looking at next July, when they would still be asking cities to do this very same thing. And it all came from the vision, the 2030, the plan, the long, the long-range plan.
The comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan.
Right.
And all these changes, and Mr. Wickman is dead on it. It is nothing but verbiage. So there's absolutely no hurry to get that done. That's it, I'll shut up.
Any questions of Mr. Fields? You've heard the reports of city operations. They'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion of Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence? Ms. Hoffman.
I have none, sir.
Any council member have correspondence? It's now, we have time on our agenda for citizens' public comments. We have two people who've signed up. First is the mayor-elect.
Thank you, Mayor. I promise I'll only take half the time that Mr. Fields took.
Oh, great.
Call me the boss.
I would like to ask council to consider withdrawing the Commonwealth Station project from the Kenton County Planning Commission hearing on January 6th, 2015. I've got a couple reasons for that. First, there are a few new faces in our council meetings, and they're going to be asked to adopt something that they may not be completely familiar with. I would prefer Gary Meyer, Don Skidmore, and myself be brought up to speed with all the details of the project. It seems that there may be some details regarding the project that may not be apparent to the public, and therefore, we are not privy to it. Also, the hearing takes place on January 6th, scheduled to take place on January 6th, which is also the same night as our city council meeting. The mayor, our city administrator, city attorney cannot attend both. Since adopting a form-based code is a new process for the City of Earlanger, I think it is, it is important for as many of us as possible to be present for the hearing. I would like that you please consider withdrawing the Commonwealth Station from the, from the hearing. Really, what I would like to do is put it on hold, but Kenton County Planning Commission does not have a means to put it on hold. Their choi, our choice is to withdraw it temporarily. I'd ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Mike Chisenhall.
I just have a couple things. The first one is something that Mr. Vioxx brought up about the streets. And one of the streets that he was referred to in the article in the newspaper was in Lakemont. All of, I'm sorry, I'm always up there with some from Lakemont, and it's never anything good.
Hey, man, it's where you live. That's, that's what you're here for.
It, the streets, I know, I know the city's been over there working on the streets. If we could keep, like, the street I live on, Park Place, is a shortcut from Nelson over to the backside of Lakemont. If we could keep some of the heavy trucks off of that street, can't do it. Well, okay. I was going to say, if we just tear up one street instead of four, it might, you know...
We agree with that, absolutely, we do.
And I know, it's like, it's a city street, everybody has a right to use it, but sometimes the concrete trucks take a shortcut, you know, or whatever, to get to the back where they're building, and it's just, you know, all of the streets are in bad shape. And the second thing I had was, I just wanted to thank everybody. I know that the mayor and a couple council members are going to be leaving, and I just wanted to thank you before you left for all your support in helping us with the struggles that we've had in Lakemont. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hug them.
And so did the other residents, believe me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
As a resident of Sherborne, with one road in and one road out, and construction going on on the back end, I'm going to be a resident coming to city council when this, when that road falls apart. Because it's, it's getting heavy coming. They plan on expanding, you know, further on at the end of Sherborne, they, Mr. Grease, I think, owns the farm at the end of Sherborne, and they're already building the other side of Twin Ridge, which is beaut, beautiful lots over there. If anybody's looking for a house, it's beautiful over there. But, but it's one road in, one road out, and it's going to be a problem, and it's not the only place in the city, so I appreciate you bringing it up. Yeah, Jim?
I will point out that the committee and the planning commission have recognized that problem, and the evaluation of the subdivision at the preliminary stage before a subdivision ever starts, along with the geotechnical soil issues that are associated with that area, they're going to evaluate what the projection is for the number of units that can be developed back there, and it has a bearing on the volume of truck traffic for construction, and it's going to have a bearing on the kind of streets that have to be constructed on the corridors that we're talking about.
Good. Thank.
It's ridiculous for someone as immature to be in that bad of shape. I mean, just today.
Yes, we're on the same page there. Thank you. Okay, that's all we have signed up this evening. Bids, Mr. Vioxx.
Yes, sir. We have two projects. The first one I want you to review there is the Sunset Drive from Dixie Highway to Fitzgerald Court, and the concrete replacement of Melgen Court. Go to the last page of the breakdown. You'll see that we had six bidders. JPS Construction was 115,975. Straight Edge Construction was 118,000, 116,838. Paul Michaels and Sons was 118,83875. TMS Construction was 129,250, $60, small print for me. Zabo Projects, Inc., 131,315. And M&amp;W Excavation Incorporated is 139,41875. JPS has been an excellent contractor for us on a number of projects. In fact, they're under contract with us right now for a couple of projects. I will recommend JPS Construction as a low bidder for this project.
Is there a motion to adopt? Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor of awarding that bid to JPS, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Vioxx.
Second project is replacement of the pavement on Mary Street and MacArthur Lane. We had four bidders. This again was a street that the city built under assessment program in the early 70s, and we know that it was subjected to fly ash as a filler, and unfortunately, that occurred, but this wasn't a privately-built street, this was a publicly-built street, so, and the people over there paid for it. JPS Construction was a low bidder at $383,204. M&amp;W Excavation Incorporated, $449,622. Straight Edge Construction, $454,273.25. And Paul Michaels and Sons Incorporated is $506,593.75. Again, JPS Construction is a bidder that, and a contractor that does excellent work in the city of Erlanger, I'll recommend JPS Construction.
Motion to accept, Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Sudkamp. Any discussion? All in favor of awarding this bid to JPS, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other bids?
That's all I have, sir.
Editorial comment. What we just went through is another reason why I think your decision on the tax, the raise in the payroll tax to devote nothing to capital projects was brilliant, because if we hadn't done that, we would really be having a hard time fixing these streets. Way to go, ladies and gentlemen, way to go. All right. Any reports of work in progress this evening? And a new business, I have one piece of new business. We have a, at the Erlanger Christian Church, we're Charlie, our minister there, one of our former student ministers, who is now a minister in Kansas, her mother has spent most of, most of her life, long, many years, collecting nativities, and they have consented to bring the nativities to our church. Our entire basement, Fellowship Hall downstairs, is filled with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of the neatest little and some huge nativity scenes that you've ever seen. Lucy's been down to see it. I've been, I was there and had my mouth fall open, and I'm on this, so you know, I was scared to death going through there, that I would just lean over and knock something over and be killed. But that's why I went before church, before there were people there. If you all are interested in seeing that, anybody in the city, there are, we have designated times for anybody to come look, just contact the church, Charlie, at 727-2076? 727-2076. Yeah, Mark?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Each of you, when you sat down tonight in the mayor-elect, I gave one to you about a training seminar that we're gonna put on the 20th. Please read that. If you'd like to attend, please let me know, and we'll get that scheduled.
Especially in light of what happened in Florence today, and the problems that they're having still out in Ferguson, telling right from wrong, I think that's a good program for the city officials to take. It's basically, when's a police officer allowed to use deadly force, under what conditions? Okay, yes.
Is there an age limit, like, kind of 19-year-old?
It's for you. It's for elected officials.
It's for us. Okay. So. It's supposed to be you guys and not me.
So, no, whatever.
No, no, that's, I didn't read the whole thing.
Who's putting the red suit on? Who do we get to beat up on?
You what?
Who's putting the red suit on? Ah, I'll be there.
See, you all come now, won't you? Huh?
Right. Any more business for the good and welfare of our city? Moving on then to legislation, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. The first one is an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending ordinance number 2397, and the budget adopted thereby for the city of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2014, ending on June 30, 2015. Attached to the ordinance is the amended budget, which indicates the changes in all the funds. Mr. Englund's in the House, could answer any questions about it.
Any questions about the ordinance? Is there, this is second reading, the motion would be to adopt an order published. Motion by Mr. Longshore, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Ms. Skidmore.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudkamp.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Longshore.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries, all ayes. We'll take care of that. Second ordinance, first reading, Mr. Wickman.
It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance to change the zoning map thereof, to reclassify thereon an approximate half-acre area that is located and known as 482 Erlanger Road with PID number 003301411700, from the R1G, a single-family residential zone, to the SC Shopping Center Zone. Again, it's an ordinance to amend your zoning map. It's been recommended by the Planning Commission, and I guess, Mayor, we really need to do this in a two-step process. We need to have a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and then a motion, it's a first reading of the ordinance, so we don't need anything on that, but I do think we need a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission? Motion by Mr. Blankenship, second by Mr. Howard. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, I'll ask the city clerk to note in a minute's the first reading of the ordinance. And we're gonna skip number three, so we'll move on to the municipal order. Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. It's a municipal order of the city council of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of council member Tom Cahill Jr. as the representative of the city to the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments.
Motion to approve the municipal order. Put Tom, keep Tom at work. Motion by Ms. Sudkamp, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you all for everything. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Longshore. How fitting. A motion and a second by three lame ducks. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See y'all later.
JD. JD. Okay, you're gonna get me with the.
The whole, the whole time I've been here, I've never been in the.
I know.
They like to take me that easy.
That was a good explanation.